Seventy thousand dollars worth of concrete and installing another expensive alternative is not really a good alternative. Just in addition to that, like I've said a couple of times here, I also had to build a detention pond. No water comes out of that detention pond, so I contribute zero to stormwater. And so, as a side note, Councilman Meisner, I know, has an issue with this, and I'm going to file a request to the city to be exempted from the stormwater fee for that particular piece of property, since there is no contribution. But I want to talk about Colorado Springs, the way they calculate their stormwater fee. They charge five dollars per residence and thirty dollars per acre of commercial property. There's now, for the residential properties, there's no differentiation between a big property and a little property. I own a house in Colorado Springs that's about eight hundred square feet. I pay exactly the same stormwater fee on that eight hundred square foot house as some of these McMansions that are five, six, ten thousand square feet. And the reason I bring this up is it was suggested here that, well, I had made a suggestion that we have a mixed stormwater fee, a fixed fee per property and a fee based on impervious surface. The suggestion was made that we couldn't do that because there's going to be some tabor issues, or there might be tabor issues, and that's kind of a red herring that gets thrown out there to say, "Ooh, you can't touch that." That's not the case. And so, I'm suggesting that, do we look into this further? I think there is a possibility to do this, and it's important to note that fees are different than taxes, because fees are exempt from going to a vote. And fees have to be based on the cost of the service, but that cost of the service does not have to be directly attributed to a specific property. It has to be fair, but it's not specific to properties. Like my example, five dollars for eight hundred square foot house, five dollars for a ten thousand square foot house. So that's why I'm saying, I think there's plenty of room in here.
Are you going to put your name in for the task force?
For what?
For the stormwater task force that we're forming.
Consider it in.
No, you have to do that.
Exactly.
In writing.
Okay.
Okay, you're going to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I got until January 3rd or something, right?
Well, you keep...
Yeah, and that's for picking priority projects.
Yeah, but I think we should talk about that, too.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's reasonable. I'd listen to you.
Thank you, I'd like you to reconsider.
Okay.
I think he has until the second.
The second?
Of Jan- December.
Mayor, as a point of information, we do have scheduled for January 7th a working session with the council and the public to discuss exactly what Dennis is proposing, which are different stormwater options, the pros, cons, legalities, so we'll look forward to that discussion.
Right, thank you.
So that's January 7th?
Seven, yes.
January 7th.
So you've got that on your calendar, Dennis?
What time?
Four P.M.
Can I just make a point to what Dennis was talking about? I agree with you, Dennis. I think that impervious surfaces is a little bit, it's not a fair judgment, but when you look at the five dollars that Colorado Springs brings in, with the amount of residents they have compared to what we have here, it would take the whole county in order to make up that kind of money.
Money?
I mean, we wouldn't have enough money to run our fund if we collected five dollars for every eight hundred square foot house, or home, or whatever. It just, so that's just all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone now, how would this, if you want to address council, just fill one of these out and bring it up to Cindy at the end. So far, we'll have the two that are going to talk about the deer harvest, and I don't have any more, we're going to move on. Good, we're moving on. Okay. Any comments or announcements from council? Ms. Turner?
Well, first, I'd like to say that I really enjoyed the Christmas parade, so I wanted to thank the chamber for doing such a good job. I know some of our fellow council people were judging, so thank you for being there. I had a lot of fun, I rode my bike with Farr and got to put lights on my bike and be a kid at heart, so that was great. And then, another holiday event happening at the library this Saturday, ten o'clock, they're going to have a book sale, Santa's going to be there, so if you want to get your picture taken with Santa, you can do that at the library this Saturday.
Thank you. Mr. Hammack?
Yes, I just wanted, the, there was a meeting at Tech Start here last Friday, their, one of their weekly luncheon get-togethers, where they talked about the P-Tech program, and just to remind everybody, that's Pathways in Technology, early college, high school is what the acronym stands for. And that's a program established by the legislature where students in six years can get there, can get an associate in arts, science degree on the STEM pathway. Right now, we have sixteen students at Canyon City High School taking advantage of this. Essentially, what you get for signing up for this program is the, it's an interim program for the students, they do get a little bit of money, they also get two free years of college, essentially, for participating in this program and completing it. And we've got sixteen in the computer information science pathways. Our Pueblo Community College is one of the, is the necessary sponsor, because they award the degree at the end of the program. One of the, one of the really interesting things is that the degree options include networking, cybersecurity, IT systems administration, software development and security, and it's a, it's a transfer degree, so that can be transferred to a four-year institution somewhere. And so, here in Canyon City, we have cyber networking instructions available at our college. Coupled with our Tech Start group and the technology and expertise they have in this area, it's just a great opportunity for our high school students, and the sixteen's not enough, is what I'll, how I'll end this, and I hope that we can, as this, this is really the first year this is happening, so it's starting, and hopefully, we can, we can get quite a few more students involved.
Thank you, Ms. Hammack. Anyone else?
I was just going to say that we have the Christmas tree lighting ceremony this December, or this Saturday, December 8th, at 5:00 P.M. at Depot Park. Mr. Mayor here will be lighting the tree for us, and we're going to have coffee, hot cocoa cookies, and the CCHS marching band will be there performing, so if you don't have anything else going on this Saturday, stop on by and watch us light the tree.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Two things. First Friday, this, this next Friday, the 7th, just want to put that out there, since we're so close to Christmas and holiday shopping. Also, I just wanted to say thank you to the city staff for opening their doors to a new staple in Canyon City for Starbucks, allowing the staff and management to come in and do their orientation. Last week went off without a hitch, and we just appreciate you opening the doors and letting us do that here, so, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things. On one, this Wednesday is the city's turn to do Carolyn Morning Line. You know, Mayor, that you've offered to do that, and I was wondering if there's another council member that could represent the city on Wednesday?
Sure, I can.
Sorry. Thank you, Councilman Hammack, so I'll count on you, too. That morning, I wanted to kind of report to you guys as well, that I have the opportunity to meet with the ministerial alliance, and that's in response to Mayor's request that we look for more volunteer opportunities for helping the homeless, and some solutions for getting them under the roof and in safe places, safe for them and safe for our residents. And some of the obstacles that we've been confronting with the homeless coalition is the getting the insurance for the churches to be able to house homeless overnight in their church. Either there, it's impossible to get an insurance policy, or the extra cost to have increased insurance in order to do that. And so, the possibility that the city has been looking at is offering a hundred dollars a night to churches during the months of November through, mid-November through mid-March, could be a solution to help them offset those additional costs to have for the insurance, so that they can house the homeless during those months. And so, I'm going to be meeting with them during that time, and seeing what kind of solutions that we could work together on in finding for the homeless. And in addition to that, another suggestion, I just want to kind of, if you guys want to talk to me later, you know, with your, with your impetus or solutions, I want to go into that meeting, making sure I have a feel for what you'd like to have, to have said or done. But another thing is that, that we also might need to look at transportation, where Los and Fishes will bring, feed them dinner, and then perhaps transportation to get them there at night, and then pick them up in the morning and feed them breakfast at Los and Fishes, and that way, they aren't loitering in the local neighborhoods afterwards and causing contention with their neighbors. And it also relieves burdens from the churches. And another suggestion, something to kind of toy around with the idea, is it's through Los and Fishes and other organizations in the city, there are opportunities, if they go through different, different criterias, that they can have a little help getting, paying rent to get into an apartment, but they doesn't pay the deposits. And so, another idea is having a revolving deposit fund, where if they go, if they get vetted and they qualify, that this, that there could be a fund available that could help pay their deposits, where ultimately, that's the greatest solution, is to get them in a house where they have a roof over their head and access to kitchen and water and sanitary facilities. And, and that deposit would go into that apartment to get them housing, and if they were to move them, that apartment, that deposit would come back into that fund, and it would be a revolving fund to go back to help the next person. And so, those are some additional ideas that we're going. Just want you to know that I'm presenting that to the alliance on Wednesday, and if you want to talk to me later, other things, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anybody else? Mr. Meisner?
Well, we do have a government meeting. Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, sir, you may.
If that is to re-present the existing plan, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. I don't think it is. I think what we're going to do is review some alternatives possibly, and CDOT will also be here for discussions. It'd be nothing more than a discussion, is that the way I take it?
True, it expands more than the scope of your recent decision on the East Quarter Plan, covers the entire quarter of U.S. 50, so that would include the Public Safety Improvement Schedule between 1st and 9th, course the East Quarter, and then beyond, but clearly, it's not to rehash your prior decision, it's to discuss the impetus behind the plan originally, what the discussions and agreements were, and see what you want to amend and revise going forward, because virtually every member of the council was not a participant or decision-maker in the adoption of that plan back in 14 and 15, so we thought it was important to bring that back to you, and as the mayor indicated, representatives from CDOT will be here, too.
So there's some history involved. Go ahead.
Well, the final paragraph in your letter doesn't suggest that, but that's fine.
Okay. It'll be a discussion. Okay. Ms. Jaquez?
With regards to what Ashley was talking about with the homeless, I think, first of all, before the city gets really involved in that program, whatever comes out, we need to have the churches come forward, the nonprofits come forward, get those groups together as a coalition, and then they can come to the city with regards to the kind of support that we may be able to give. I don't think the city should be the one that starts off and say, "Well, we're going to give this amount of money or that amount of money," ahead of time. Let's get the community involved first, because it's the community that's going to have to continue to support this issue, because it's not going to go away. In fact, it'll probably get worse as time progresses, so this is my feeling. I don't have a problem helping the homeless, okay? But that's what I feel, first of all, the churches, the nonprofits in this town, first of all, get together, step up to the plate, and then they can come to the city and say, "This is what we're looking at, how can you help us?" And then we can look at it that way. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jaquez. Okay. Anyone else?
Just a, just a clarification, that there is a homeless coalition that involves churches and nonprofits and community members, and they've been meeting actively for over a year, and we are, and they are the ones that are coming.
I haven't seen a list of anything, of what you're talking about. I haven't seen a list that says this church, this people, or there, I mean, who's involved? I mean, just say there's one. Provide me the names of all these organizations that you're talking about, so that I know who's involved.
Okay, I'll forward you some information.
Yeah, we can do that. Let's move on. Also, this morning, Mr. Hammack and I attended a housing, what would you call that this morning? It was...
So, it was a listening, it was an initial presentation and listening session on a study that's going to be done on housing in our county.
Okay. And Wednesday, we also have the six mayors of the, there are six mayors in this county, and we meet once a month, and that's kind of fun. This week, this month, we meet in Williamsburg and discuss about issues and things that are going on in the county. It's very interesting, so, anyone else? And I'll be there.
You should.
Okay. Then I'll move for the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Would you cover the consent agenda, Mr. Administrator?
Mayor and council, a nice, sweet, and short consent agenda. 7A is to accept the resignation unfortunate of Michael Schrader, who's moving outside the corporate limits of the city, so therefore, he's not qualified to be on the planning commission. This would authorize the staff to publish notice and accept letters of interest, which we'll bring back to the council for your meetings in January. This is a term that won't expire till July 2021, so there's two and a half years of potential service here, so we think that's a great opportunity. 7B would authorize the minister to sign a water service contract with Wethers and Bellantoni at 806 Sineet Avenue to get access to city water, and C is just a filing and listing of our bills.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any, someone would like to make a motion, or any additions or correction on the minutes? Mr. Meisner? No? What are you raising your pencil for?
Well, 'cause I thought you was going to say agendas, but you said minutes.
Okay, I'll say agenda, then.
Well, I would suggest, considering that we have public here on the deer harvest, that we move it up to 8A, so that those people don't have to maybe go through this whole process, because a lot of those are second readings and what have you, but...
So we would do regular 8 and then 8A?
Or nine, whatever you call nine, before nine. Eight and a half?
Eight point five.
Nine point, last one.
Well, let's do 8, 9, and then 9A.
I don't care, just move them up. Sit here all night.
Because there are people here for the arts consideration, so you're just trying to sort of endear them to you.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, well, it's going to be an evening, right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to motion that we adopt the agenda and consent agenda as amended by Councilman Meisner.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Jaquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to open a public hearing. This hearing is to consider the renewable retail liquor license, traffic tavern license for My Brother's Place located at 625 Main Street, Canyon City, Colorado. The hearing is now open. Could I have a staff report, both the clerk and the police chief? Chief first, he's got more stars.
I'm just ready. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, our report tonight is basically on the licensing period findings by the police department at the location of Brother's Bar. Just like in other hearings that we've had about license renewals, anything that appears to be a pattern, I feel it's my duty to be fair, not only to the previous reports, but also as a matter of practice, to provide you with the information to make a fair and just determination for a license renewal. So with that, at the 90-day period, when I was noticed by Ms. Foster Owens concerning the license renewal on Brother's Bar, I informed her that we had several instances, and to be precise, three instances of drug dealing that we were aware of inside the bar. These are not instances that occurred outside or in the location, these actually occurred inside. June 5th, and July 3rd, and September 18th of this year. In each of those instances, the police department made contact with individuals who were selling narcotics. Two were methamphetamines, one was cocaine, inside of the licensed premises. In one of those instances, an undercover officer was actually the person who was attempting to purchase the illicit substance, that was the actual instance in July, and that substance was methamphetamines. Obviously, that's not something that we could have discussed with the bar owners at the time that these incidents occurred, but in consideration for the license renewal, I think it was important for you to know that information. But also, is important for you to know is that we have since, the license renewal period has come up for renewal, we have made contact with the bar owners, Ms. Don Schmittl, and had conversations about these three instances. We've also provided her with statistics of other instances inside the bar, and I think one thing is noteworthy for you to understand is that Brother's Bar has the highest number of bar checks. Part of that is because the bar itself actually requests us to come inside of there. So I, I say that to evidence that the bar is making, and the ownership and management are making efforts in order to curb this trend, and we are going to have additional follow-up with the bar owners concerning drug recognition. I submitted in your packet, and you should have that, the memo that outlines the actual plans that we've come up with, which include not only lighting, but a crime prevention through environmental design assessment, training for bartenders on the different types of drug dealing, and being able to recognize that so they can address it, having all staff attend tips training. Currently, she's got, at least from last report, half of her staff doing this annually, and continuing the practice of, once she identifies someone inside the bar or behaviors associated with narcotics dealing inside, that person would then be formally trespassed from Brother's Bar. So with those things in mind, my recommendation would be to renew the license for the following period, with the understanding that the, the bar owners work with the police department to correct these deficiencies, and obviously, if it does not, we'll have further conversation at the next licensing period, or should a violation occur, we'll request a special hearing.
Thank you. And council, any questions to the chief? Ms. Jaquez?
Yeah, I read all the stuff you have, and the one thing that I would stress on is there's a comment in here, there's, the police department would like to see a plan to reduce. I don't like the word reduce. I'd like to have the word in there, eliminate. I mean, we don't want to say, "Okay, this time you got caught with five drug dealers, but next time, three will be okay." So I don't like the word reduce, I want eliminated, and it should be that way, with any of the bars, with any of the places, and that we, we should stress that the illegal drugs are not tolerated anywhere in the town of Canyon City.
Ms. Gonzalez, did you have a comment?
I do. I just have a question. With the, the issue or the concern of the underage patron that was at the, at the bar, he wasn't in the bar when, when that was found, but what measures are being taken to, to ensure that we're serving people of age?
So, we, we actually work with the Division of Revenue Liquor Enforcement to do training for the bars, and tomorrow morning, we're actually going to host, for all licensed bar establishments, a quarterly liquor training. It's not necessarily a board, but it would be something to where we get all the licensed establishments together, to have conversations about what's occurring inside their bar, any changes that might occur in the code. Division of Revenue will not be with us tomorrow, but we're hopeful that in the future, they'll meet with us on our quarterly basis, so that we can have regular conversations about that, and then obviously, update training. Tips is one of those that talks about over-service as well as service to minors, and in Sep-, I believe it was in September, I believe it was the 26th, the Division of Revenue came through Canyon City and did compliance checks throughout the city. Brother's Bar did not have any violations on that night.
Okay. And then my next question is, the patron, the underage patron was probably pretty intoxicated when he left. What measures are being taken for making sure that people don't leave and get into a vehicle, being that intoxicated?
So, the tips training is one of those that actually covers over-service and the bar's responsibility to make sure that their patrons are safe, and so if they are aware that a person is going to be getting inside of a vehicle and they are intoxicated, they do have a duty to intercede, and part of the meetings that we're going to have is, how is it appropriate for them to do that? My thought would be, is that initially, if they talk with an individual, they can't get them a cab, that's when law enforcement needs to be notified and brought in.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Smith?
Chief Harvey, I saw on one of your lists... On one of your lists, that Michelle Ryder was going to do an assessment of their property. Has that assessment been done, and have recommendations already been made on how they can make improvements to their facility to be more safe and protected from the, the drug deals or from things happening outside?
No, ma'am, not yet.
She hasn't done that one yet.
Oh, okay. It was actually done today. I knew we had it scheduled, but I wasn't sure it was actually completed, but I don't have the findings of it yet, so they actually did do it on-site, so we should have those within a week, and should be able to act on those.
And what's a, what's a reasonable timeframe to have adherence to those recommendations?
Depends on what the recommendations are. If it's increased lighting, and I forgot to mention, it's in the memo there, that Brothers has actually got several video cameras, both inside and out, and they're going to start utilizing those, putting up signs, so if it's something small, cost-wise, then I think, you know, 30 days is a reasonable timeframe, but if it requires structural change, or it requires additional lighting, that, then the timeframe may be stretched out, but I would say 30 to 60 days, based on what I know of what recommendations we anticipated.
And what other criteria do you want to see in place within those 30 to 60 days in this list?
So the...
Besides just having, going to these meetings and getting extra certification?
So the increased lighting, having signs actually on the business to say that they are actually being recorded, so that people, patrons are aware that if they're doing drug deals, that that actually will, there is cooperation with the police, so that if their video surveillance camera system captures a drug deal, that they'll notify us, and hopefully, that will deter, and I would love to eliminate all drug dealing, and I hope that's an honest step towards it, but the increased lighting in the alleyways, behind Brother's Bar, and then some of the policy changes. So not many structural changes as far as what I knew right now, and I don't think that has changed much with the accepted assessment, but I have not had a chance to review that yet.
Okay. And I do appreciate the, the information that a lot of the, the high volume of calls are because they have called you in, and I do appreciate hearing that, from your facility, because the last time we were here with a different facility, their solution was to quit calling the police. And I'll say the same thing, I'd rather see you double your calls in order to create a culture of safety and a culture of public health, and so I appreciate, I appreciate that, and again, I'd rather see an increase in calls, if that is a way to change the culture inside that bar, to show that there's no tolerance for illegal drug activity.
On that same front, My Brother's Place and the management and ownership have actually tried to get the bar alliance going, and have reached out to other bars, offered their location. We actually attended a bar alliance meeting at My Brother's Place. Some of the other bars didn't participate, which is why we're coordinating that now, but it's pretty clear, based on my experience with My Brother's Place and Ms. Schmittl, that they're very cooperative and they want to make a change.
Thank you.
Mr. Meisner?
My, my concern, kind of shoulders on, on Ms. Smith's, is is that as we encourage all these owners to contact P, the PD, we also increase the numbers, but then we turn around and we look at the numbers as a criteria for a problem, so somewhere, we need to find a balance in terms of the types of numbers that we look at, or how we're looking at those numbers.
So at, at the bar alliance meeting that we're going to have tomorrow... So at the bar alliance meeting that we're going to have tomorrow, actually the criterion that we're going to make somewhat standardized across all bars is whether an assault, criminal mischief, disturbances, either physical noise or verbal, fraud, persons with weapons, possession or distribution of drugs, suspicious activities, suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles, thefts, threats, trespass, trespassing in a vehicle which is essentially breaking into a car, and then actual warrants. And the reason why we chose those categories is, you know, even if a bar owner is calling us about those, if the numbers are still high, something's wrong there. And so the purpose behind these particular call volumes and having a discussion in our quarterly meetings about those is that if they call us because they're having fights every Friday night, and so the numbers are really high, but they're calling us for those, that we need to have discussions with them about, you know, we've had this many assaults or this many felony assaults, so that we can have a discussion about cutting people off or recognizing people that are causing trouble, not allowing them back in the bar. It can foster the discussion between us and the bar ownership about how to change that. So if, let's say, the bar checks, for example, Brothers had 146 of those. You're not going to see those on any report that I'm giving to you because many of those, they requested those. This category of things that are here, if we're getting people, and this is not happening in my brother's place, but if we're having somebody get assaulted, sexual assaults, we need to have a discussion with the bar ownership about how do we change that and is it a cultural thing or a policy thing with the bar? Because, I mean, this is a case in point. We have 146 bar checks at my brother's place, but yet we have three instances of drug dealing happening inside the bar. So the discussion is, how do we fix that gap? Because if you call an officer to say, hey, I want somebody to walk through, but the request is not that, hey, Mr. so-and-so is in here, we know this guy deals drugs, we'd like a walk-through, then that cues in the officer that it's more than just walking through and seeing a bunch of people drinking. Because quite honestly, that's really what a bar check is, is to establish presence and if there's something that's obviously wrong there, to address it. But if we don't have the conversation about why the bar check is being requested, and it may very well be that some of the bartenders knew that folks were being inside of there dealing drugs and requested a bar check, but if my folks don't know that and they don't deal drugs in front of my folks when they're walking through, then we're missing a piece of that.
I recognize what you're saying, but my point is, if the client is compliant and reports 100% of her incidences, her numbers are higher, and John Doe over here is reporting 75, those numbers are skewed. And we need to, as we progress, we need to make for sure we've got a system to at least recognize that.
So if during the report, if we had, in your instance, 75 calls at a particular bar that doesn't necessarily call us, that's one of the things that I'll bring out in my report, is that this bar is not notifying policemen incidents occur. So the representation that we have here may or may not be everything that's happening inside the bar. Would that address your concern?
If I don't, no. If they don't call you and you don't know about it, it never gets reported. Whereas you've got a proactive owner that reports all of those incidences, their numbers are going to be higher. Where another owner that is less proactive is not going to report some of those borderline instances that are not going to cause other contact. So we just need to be careful when we strictly look at not just numbers, of numbers of calls that are coming in. We need to be careful with that number.
Okay.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Well, to kind of talk about what you're talking about, is there a way to code the calls a little bit differently? Maybe record them in a different column or?
No, unfortunately, they're not. And so it's very difficult to prove a negative. It's, and you know, communities across the country face this, that they have neighborhoods that crime is rampant and the police know about it. But the problem is, nobody actually reports it. So I get exactly what you're saying there. So how do we create a culture to where it's good to call the police?
Right.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to identify in the system, is to say, okay, well, even if you're calling us, if you've got 40 assaults, that's a problem. I think that's kind of where we're going with this. There's never going to be a perfect solution, just like in these other communities. We may know crime is rampant in a certain section of town, but if that community doesn't trust us and doesn't call us, and the only way I can really address it is that, to identify, like I've done in this instance, that the bar ownership calls us on a regular basis.
That's what I was just going to say.
They are actively, proactively trying to help us with the bar situation in town. That's the only way I can address it. And I'm open to suggestions of how we do it differently.
Well, and a bar is going to get more calls than an auto repair shop, you know? I mean, that's just-
Depends on what you're doing at the auto repair shop. Okay, we're slipping down a rabbit hole here. One more time, one question, Ms. Hammer.
Well, just a comment, on the industrial side of things, when you're trying to prevent accidents, you have what's called the accident pyramid, where you have a lot of low-level incidents, you know, that build up towards a major event. And that would be one way the chief could, you know, dice and slice the statistics. If you have only major events at a bar, there's an indication something's wrong there too.
Right.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments, appreciate it. Cindy, do you have any comments or anything?
All of their paperwork in, I'm good. I have everything I need for their renewal, so.
Including the cigar and tobacco?
We have that too, yes. It should have been included in your packet. We're good. They will be required to return that all in in January.
Okay.
I have a question for the owners.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to call them up next.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Harvey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Schmittl, would you?
Next.
Next? Number four? No. Don Schmittl, the owner of Brothers?
Yes.
Yes. Would you like to make any comments or just field questions from counsel?
Well, first off, I have met with Commander Hill. Today, I had the safety assessment. I've already called my electrician. He'll be fixing the lighting that they requested, probably within the next week. I did want to show you guys the signs I had made for the front and back doors, and this one probably for the middle of the bar that says, "Smile, you're on camera, no drugs allowed. If you're dealing, smile big." So those are going up in the bar. You know, I'm probably the busiest bar in town on a year-round basis, and it's really hard to catch every single thing that's going on in there, but, you know, I hire more staff than the other bars do. Probably four nights a week, I have extra staff, guys at the doors checking IDs, watching for problems. We have very few violent crimes. In the women's bathroom, I have a hashtag me-too deal that if a girl is out and about and she feels threatened, she can come to the bar and order a specific shot or drink a specific way that shows, tells my bartender she's in trouble and how we're getting her out. The only problem I have is, in my 12 years, the last four years of my liquor license has expired well before I get it. And I know that, you told me it was 180 days I had, which is fine, except for my vendors have specific company policies. And I'm only allowed to spend $2,000 a year outside of my vendors. So having an expired license, the last four or five years, it's been like months. My vendors, I have two major vendors that won't sell to me, so I have to buy outside to the liquor store when the license is expired. So that's something, you know, when we're required to do our due diligence, I would hope that that gets better for us in the future, that our license doesn't continue to be expired.
On this year, though, your license did not come in until November, which it was expiring in November.
Well, I got the state, but I never got the cities. I requested it twice.
It was left up at the front in October. And had we gotten this earlier, we could have gotten it on the ballot, or onto the city council meeting earlier.
Hey, well, I won't argue with you about it because I called and talked to Denise twice about it, so. But nevertheless, it really, this late in the year when we're only allowed to spend too much money, or so much money, it does affect how I do business when it's expired. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any questions of counsel? Ms. Cochran?
Hi there.
Hi.
You had made a comment that you have gentlemen who check IDs at the door.
Yes.
So on the incident where that, on 625, where the underage drinker was being served, did you not have people at the door or?
Well, that was in afternoon when it started. They came in in the afternoon. He had his brother's ID.
Okay.
His brother and him are like twins.
Look, okay.
Just look alike. We ID'd them, they came in at separate times. So he was ID'd. When we found out, we were told by some other RAF guides that he was underage. We kicked him out of the bar. I contacted Tony at Wale, he lost his job at Wale. And then I understood later that he was, several hours later, he was picked up down the street.
Yeah, in the report we were given, it stated that he was passed out in his car and there was vomit everywhere. And I guess my concern reading that is that there was probably some over-serving. The gentleman also stated that he had been served, you know, six or seven drinks within the bar, being underage, you know, he probably could not handle his liquor as well.
I think he probably was served about three, and he did go down the street to drink. He did not stay at my bar after we found out he was underage.
Okay, so my question is not so much the underage thing. My question is, do you guys have a general policy for over-serving? How do you identify that someone is being over-served? Do you communicate, you know, the bartenders communicate with each other and say, hey, I've already given this guy, you know, three drinks and I think he's had too much?
Yes, we do. And my bar, we have measured pours, so nothing is, every pour is measured. So you can't, I was at another bar, I won't say which one, on Thursday night for pool league, and they had three shots per drink. It was ridiculous. Per every drink they were selling for $4, it was three shots in it. We communicate with each other. We watch when they come in the door. You know, the guys at the door will say, sorry, you can't come in, or if they're staggering or acting weird, we just don't serve them. If after a couple of drinks, they start being-
Bledrin.
Yeah, then we cut them off and kick them out because obviously something's wrong.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that-
Yeah.
-that communication was happening and you guys-
And frankly, it doesn't do any good to over-serve anybody.
Right.
Because what it does is cause you to have your two or three drinks with three shots apiece in them, and you're too drunk and you have to leave after two drinks. We don't make any money doing that. We lose money and my staff doesn't make any money over-serving.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Schmittl?
I just want to ask, are you willing to make all of the changes that have been requested to create more safety at your-
Yes, yes. I've already started.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Schmittl. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion and a second. Ms. Gonzalez?
Mayor, I make a motion that we renew the retail liquor license for my brother's place located at 625 Main Street, Canyon City. Second?
Second, Ms. Turner, sorry.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Can we do, can I do an amendment to the motion?
Well, it's Ms. Gonzalez's motion.
Yeah. And the reason I'm asking is based on what we have, the reports we have, and then I'm going to look back on the deal we had with McClure's. And we put them off over and over, and they didn't have some of the stuff that this one has. And I think that we should look at holding this over until our second meeting in January, and then this way, we can get another report from the police department. And I just think it's, for me, right now, to let them have their liquor license renewal right now would be inappropriate.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez?
I disagree because I feel like the reaction to the requests that are being taken, or that are being given by the owner is receptive. I feel like she's-
And we had the same thing with McClure's. When we think back, when we had McClure's, they said the same thing, that they would comply with everything and all this other stuff, but yet we still continue to post them off.
I disagree.
I mean, if I can't make the amendment to it, that's fine, but I'm just saying, I don't think that this one should go through at this go-around based on all the reports and everything else that we have with regards to this. And I just feel like we should hold it off until the second council meeting in January. That's my feeling.
Okay, Ms. Arquez has made a motion, and so we will need a second or, are there any seconds for that motion from Ms. Arquez? Hearing none, it dies below like a second. Now, we're going back to Ms. Gonzalez's motion and a second. We need a second. Did we get a second? Ms. Turner, we seconded?
Yes.
Any discussions on that motion?
I would just like to point out that the reception has been different from tonight. The last time we had a bar owner before us, he wanted to deal with his problems by giving his bartenders weapons and shutting off the cameras and quit calling the police and not having escorts for women to their cars at night. And so I really appreciate that you're being proactive, you want to make a difference. And that, but at the same point, I do want to have no tolerance for illegal drug use and drug dealing at every establishment.
I agree with that. And the other thing I failed to tell you is that my bar offers cat counters for anybody who needs one. Please send people on the table.
Okay, we have-
I'm sorry. Can I ask our lawyer a question?
I think you can.
If we pass today, the instances that the chief has brought to us, are those grounds for revoking the license if they continue to happen?
They are.
Okay, so if we pass it today and the stuff is continuing to happen, we don't have to wait for the renewal period?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
You can bring an order to show cause anytime during the timeframe of the license.
Thank you.
Okay, we are in the discussion period. Is anybody else having discussion on that? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call of votes.
Councilmember Cochran? Aye. Councilmember Gonzalez? Aye. Councilmember Hemrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
No.
Councilmember Meisner?
Yea.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Then let's move on to a discussion of the Fremont Center for the Arts merger consideration. I'd invite the city administrator for his comments.
Mayor, counsel, I'll provide you a brief overview of this potential matter. Since 1947, the city has had the honor of having a fine arts association, so 71 years. But unlike, or like, I should say, a lot of not-for-profits, they're running into significant financial headwinds. And it looks like, from a financial standpoint, they'll probably be insolvent by the beginning of this next year. To that end, they have approached the city in the last month to look at the possibility of the city merging with them. This would be consistent with the city's other cultural assets, the library and the museum, which collectively, we invest over $890,000 a year, so it'd be in that vein. To that end, we've put together a business plan. Its intent is to, should the council approve this, would be to capitalize on the history and the legacy of this cultural asset and ensure that, you know, it's only retained, but it prospers under the direction of the city, much like the library and the museum, which are iconic in this community. Some of the conditions we would request is, unless the county, and we certainly should approach the county for capital support, in the absence of that support, we would suggest renaming the center to the City of Canyon Arts and Events Center instead of just the Fremont Arts Center. There would be no new taxes required to undertake these measures. We want to make that crystal clear to the public. We would do it with existing resources. The estimated budget for 2019 would be approximately $264,000, not an insignificant amount. The governance structure, they're existing right now, would be a full-time staff member and two part-time seasonal members. They would be directly supervised by our library director, Suzanne Lasher, and also with assistance from Lisa from the museum in the area of grants, both capital and operating grants. So we could bring to bear to this operation some real experience in, and not only financial, but also managerial support. We would want to make sure that there were members of the current arts center board that would come over to the advisory board of the library and museum. We think that synergy would be very important and powerful, but same time, maintain the current 501(c) status, but make it a friends of the arts and events center, much like the library has and the museum both have, friends of for donation purposes. The biggest change, the arts are critically important in this mission, but to make it financially solvent, a going concern, we have to introduce events rentals to this formula. Other centers have been extremely successful, right up the street in Salida, the steam plant recovers 74% of their cost because they're both an arts facility, not just visual arts, of their cost because they're both an arts facility, not just visual arts, but also performing arts, but also an event center that hosts over 500 events in this past year. Evergreen has a community and art center. They're recovering 84% of their cost. Caro Springs has, has a center there that, again, is a, both an art center, but also a rental facility. So that would be incumbent upon the council to make sure that was part of the repurposing of the arts center. Part of that would also be to secure through an RFP, a catering concessionaire, because that will be a very important partner to the center, to make sure that they're soliciting people for business, social, fraternal functions, and providing them high level of service. And as a result, the center would get a percentage of their gross revenue. We've not proposed at this time for that to be an exclusive arrangement. So if you were having a family reunion, for example, you want to lease the center, you could do so without having to hire the caterer. We'll know within a year or so whether that's a win-win scenario, but most facilities do allow for that option of doing it yourself or using someone else for flexibility. Also, a significant issue, and we'll have to work with the city attorneys on this, would be the expansion of their current liquor license. They have a specialty license, limits them only to a handful of opportunities annually. This would be operating more like a restaurant and entertainment venue. They would need a liquor license that operates 365 days a year. Programming, besides what they've currently historically done with their exhibits and, and classes, would be the element of the rentals. So striking that balance between showcasing art through exhibitions and having classes, that has to be balanced on the schedule with renting that space out. And probably the most desirable space in the whole building is the first floor. So we have to create, better utilize that space, but balance out those interests. Clearly, marketing would be critical. They have some staff experience with that. We also have Christie, who's a phenom as far as marketing, especially online, social media. So we need to make sure that there's a strong brand and presence of this facility, and the public recognize that it's not just an art center, that they can utilize it for rental purposes. And then, we would propose, in the transition, that they maintain through their Friends of the permanent art collection, though that's a collection that we could exhibit, not just at the facility, but at city hall and other government facilities, which we would love to do. In addition to allowing them to retain, they have a grand piano there. None of us plays the piano, so we don't have a particular interest in retaining that. However, the building serves as a critical asset. If two or three years down the road, we have not turned a corner financially, that is an asset that can be disposed of by the city to offset this investment. So that provides both an incentive to make sure this is a winning proposition, both financially and programmatically to the community, but also, you know, it creates a safety net for this body. We think that's important. But like any business plan, there needs to be performance requirements, and we propose them at the very end. We think they're extremely reasonable. Cost recoveries at 10%, and moving up to 20, 30, 40, 50% by year five. Again, by comparison, Slida's at 73%, Evergreen's at 84%. This is never going to be a profit center, but if we can reduce the cost burden on the taxpayer, we think that's a worthwhile cause. And there are other related activity and metrics to ensure that it is a successful endeavor. Any questions?
Any question for our administrator?
I have a question for you. I assume Harry's here for this?
Ms. Turner, go ahead.
Or no?
Harry, where I can answer your question.
Okay. My question is, I know in the 2019 budget, we have funds available for this because we've been able to move stuff around and carry over. In 2020 and 2021, is there excess of $200,000 for us to put towards this?
Yeah. It remains to be seen after the year-end, what, what the spending level is. Certainly, that will be the concern, you know, that how we are going to accomplish, you know, what we need to. But if this continues like she's, Tony said, we might have to sell the property. But hopefully, you know, we'll continue in 2020 and 21. I think we should, if we have enough reserve available at that time, we should not have any problem.
And if there is no reserve, we would have to pull from other-
Then you have to identify the, which expenditure we are going to cut from the operation or capital items, you know, to make $265,000.
My concern is that, you know, we've just asked for rate increases for water and storm water, because the city is not able to fund those projects without help from our taxpayers. And those are necessary services, in my opinion. And then to turn around and suddenly come up with excess of $200,000 in our budget after we've just told our citizens that we don't have money to, to do storm water fixes, is a little concerning to me. And I just don't know that I'm comfortable with it.
Again, in the big picture, the city has a $40 million 2019 budget. This would represent one-half of 1%. Clearly, between Harry and myself, we can find the means to make sure this is a going concern. The difference between this facility, and what you're currently investing in from a cultural standpoint, the library and the museum, is that there was no cost recovery there. They do get some donations for capital improvements, small ones, but this one would be on a course where they would have to recover a significant portion of their costs in a fairly short period of time. So there will be a lot of pressure for them to operate effectively and efficiently, and like an enterprise. For example, Salida's actually, and that's something you may consider down the road, their steam plant is actually an enterprise fund, not, not part of the general fund. But then, on the other hand, City of Salida dedicates a piece of the lodging tax and the general fund to support that facility, because its economic impact to its downtown. A recent third-party study indicated they generate $1.8 million for the city. I would hope that we will come close to that in the years to come, but this could be a significant economic force and driver for our downtown, which we all recognize is a very important strategy for the city.
Ms. Hammerick?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to say, in, in responding to Councilwoman Cochran's concerns, this is not a forever thing either. This is, this is a performance-based proposal that, that if, if it goes off the rails, we do have a way, the city will have a way to protect itself from unnecessary costs, and can make changes as necessary. So this will be, this, we'll get a chance every year to look at this and see how this is doing. And if we're not headed in the right direction, we can do something else. But the bottom line, in, in my view, is that if we don't take this opportunity now, it's going to go away. They're going to go out of business. The building will be gone, and, and we'll, we'll lose an opportunity for our citizens. And so it is, it is, looking at the, at the different, you know, things that have happened with storm water and things like that, it is a concern. It is a concern, but, but this is, this, this is going to be, this, we only get this opportunity once, and, and we need to make sure it works correctly. And that's what I think that we, we as councilmembers have to do.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I just, I, I agree with you, and I agree with you. But I, but what I, what I want to say is that the, the opportunity to have an event center, a different event center, brought to our community would be huge. We have very limited resources when it comes to having an event center. And if we could have something that was managed well, and ran well, I think it would bring us a great deal of opportunity. So that's all I have to say.
Ms. Turner?
I'd also just like to make sure that we're not losing sight of the fact that they are giving up this building for us, and it is a very valuable piece of property in the downtown area. And it comes with a bunch of parking places, which we also know is a premium downtown. So there's part of the bargain is, they're giving up, you know, very valuable, valuable asset in exchange for hoping to survive and stay there. And I do think, if they have the support, I'm hoping they can grow in ways that they haven't been able to recently, and that they can be like Salida. When we took that tour earlier this year, man, it was so impressive to see how their arts community was really driving their downtown growth. And I'd love to see that here for our city.
Ms. Meisner?
Nope.
Go ahead.
The $264,000, is there any relationship between that and the infamous or famous $300,000 figure that looms in the budget?
As, as it relates to what we had dedicated for marketing purposes?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a relationship. Some of the funding is coming from that, since we're not going to be utilizing it, given the failed vote. And again, to Amanda's point, that puts pressure on us to make sure that, you know, we can accelerate revenue sources from this enterprise, so that we can offset that dependency. It's not going to happen overnight, but we think, in a reasonable course of over the next three to five years, we should be moving in the right direction. And if we're not, we'll be the first ones to tell you, sell the building, you know, liquidate these losses, and let's call it a day. But we tried, but we'd like to be successful, but that's clearly has to be front and center in our thought process, that we're not on an unlimited cruise here. This is a limited cruise of up to five years, but we got to prove ourselves and be successful.
What portion of the $264,000, or $265,000, what portion or percentage of that is coming from the $300,000?
Harry probably will answer that.
The $265,000 is coming out of the $200,000.
All of it.
Yeah.
So are we then facing potentially changing some future funding for some other marketing-related expenses in 2019?
Possibly. We're also looking for continued revenue growth, too, to compensate for this. I mean, if we do our jobs, and we're going to stimulate particularly the downtown, which right now only represents sadly about 3% of our total sales tax, by comparison, one hotel, as we've talked before, that's under construction, will generate more. One building will generate more sales tax than the entire downtown. There's something wrong with that picture. We have a lot of potential for downtown. It's not being realized. We hope this is going to be a move in the right direction, but other people need to step up to the plate and operate the downtown as a full, you know, service downtown. When you go to Salida, shops aren't closed. They're busy. I was just there this past week. We are not there yet. Hopefully, this is an encouragement to others that if we can drive business to the downtown, they will operate and be open and service these folks and spend money. Because physically, the downtown is attractive. There's plenty of parking. We're just missing a critical ingredient, and that is just core operating presence. That needs to happen.
Do you, do you anticipate the catering being an additional expense to the $265?
No, that's a revenue source. The caterer has to assume that risk. And again, there's a fine line between, you know, ensuring them success by having the rights to service people without having an exclusive contract. We may find out after the first year that they're going to come back and say, if it's not exclusive, I can't do this job, you know? So that first year is going to be really important, to provide the maximum flexibility to the public, but it may not be affordable to the caterer, who's finding out that, well, people are still using the building, but they're not using us. And we're proposing that in any RFP, that the, the city get 10% of the gross revenue. So that means they need to succeed if we're going to be successful, too. It's a partnership.
I notice in the responsibilities for the manager,
Yeah.
that it includes marketing and communications. And at least in some of the discussions we've had, there's been the discussion that that's, those skill sets are not necessarily strengths. And I, I do not even know the current director, and this is not intended towards that director, but those skill sets are not necessarily strengths of some directors. But I also see this marketing on the front page.
Certainly, it's required.
Who's going to actually handle that marketing?
There, there will be a part-time person that will be the principal person responsible. We'll also lend Christie's expertise. Again, just like in my role, you can't have someone who's an expert at everything, as long as they have general knowledge, they know that things are working. And there are proven techniques, both in marketing, especially online. One of the most significant things we're going to have to do is reexamine this budget, because this budget is really based upon their past history. We have to reexamine and say, how much do we really need to invest on their own independent and, and vibrant website? And, and in today's world, we need to have a mobile platform for the, if you're going to lease space there, if you're going to go to a class, you better have a, a mobile app for this facility, or you're not going to be competitive. And so we have to include those investments in this first year. That will be a very critical initial step.
In your overview, you had mentioned staffing at, at two, one full-time and two part-time seasonal. What's that seasonal schedule?
Pretty much be working roughly 20 to 25 hours a week.
But all year?
Well, that's what we, we need to get a better sense. We'll be meeting with them, should this be a, a, a direction that you provide us, so that we can develop that schedule. There may be some low times during the year. We don't need to have someone there, but they're going to have their hands full, I can assure you that. And our folks are going to have their hands full partnering to make this a successful venture. We're not just going to say, oh, one person and two part-time people are going to make this a success. That's a failure.
The projection for wages and salaries on the budget that you gave us?
Yes.
What is your seasonal projection in terms of hours for those part-time people?
Again, probably 20 to 25 hours throughout the year.
Throughout the year?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My pleasure.
I have a couple of questions. You talked about having a mobile base for a website. So is that the cost for building and structuring that website? Is that included into these initial costs? And also professional photography to make it a premier site?
No, again, this preliminary budget is largely based upon their historical expenditures. We need to sit down with them and our staff and basically redo the, stay within the envelope, but maybe reprioritize the expenditures. And so, I don't want to go much further than that, other than to say, having an online presence will be very critical. And so we have to make that investment early, not late.
And another question, if, we have instituted a $50,000 fire safety grant for private businesses, and so far, we haven't had any businesses take advantage of that. If in the year 2019, if no private entity takes advantage of that fire safety grant, could we use that money towards the improvements?
Well, the only issue is a timing issue. They really need to make this improvement now. And it's, it's, it's a fire suppression monitoring system in the basement of the art center that works, needs to be done now. It's up to the council. We prefer you not take that grant away for this purposes. We've budgeted for it, because you may have some private sector candidates this year, and we'd hate for them to lose out. So it's, because they need to get the work done now, we really can't wait six months to see if anyone else has shown interest in it. Right now, no one has, so it's not a big gamble.
But there's a possibility.
But there's some possibilities out there, yeah.
Yeah. I would, I would just like to say that I, I do see this as being a pro for downtown, a pro for economic development. And, and also for their potential for success, having the partnership with the city and with the library and the museum, it really makes it more suitable to be, being able to get grant money in the first place, and to get sponsorships, because no one wants to give money to a sinking ship. They want to see, go towards something that's going to be lasting, and will make a difference. And I see this, that could potentially really be a huge boon to this. And I, I would love to see that Makin Plaza thrive and become vibrant. And I agree with Councilmember Gonzalez that another event center would certainly be needed, and it could be a gorgeous place to hold events.
Okay. Anyone from the arts group like to comment to council or step forward? Did you, I thought you drew straws earlier, and Tony got the short one.
We have to answer any further questions. Tony's done a great job covering it.
Okay. And your position, Ms. Reiser, at the, as president?
I am.
You're on the board?
I'm president of the board.
President of the board. Does anybody have any questions of the president of the board?
Is, is the current director here?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Buddy Dexter.
Would you like us to approach?
Please.
Please.
I think it's pretty prudent that we hear from them with this big decision.
I'd like to at least hear from the director.
Put him on the spot.
This is Buddy Dexter. He's the current director.
Yes, I'm the current director.
My, my general question is, is you sell us. I mean, you, you tell me what.
Well, the art center is 71 years old, and it, it has been a very important part of this community for a very long time. And the city's relationship with the art center goes back that far. It was the city that helped pool together the first group of citizens that formed the art- that formed the Art Center. And when Canyon City Arts Association became Fremont Center of the Arts and took over the library, it was the city that helped push that forward and help maintain it in its early years, and it's helped many times throughout since then. Over the past two years, we haven't been able to get the support that we had prior for many different reasons. A lot of our benefactors have kind of aged out of their ability to help. Volunteerism has dropped profusely. And so when I took over as director just over two months ago, we saw the writing on the wall that there weren't very many options left for us. And so that's when we, as a group, decided to approach the city to see if that relationship could continue and grow.
I assume you've reviewed this plan that administrator presented to us?
Yes, sir, I have.
Any thoughts on your support or lack of support of that plan?
One hundred percent support.
Let me take this one. So what Buddy has so kindly left out is most of the plan he's had the vision for and the board has had the vision for for quite some time. The problem is, in order to pay the bills and keep the doors open and that sort of thing, we have been spending every ounce of energy and every bit of time we have trying to get the money together to pay the bills. So we haven't been able to grow programs. We haven't been able to have events. It's been tough. So this is such a beautiful, iconic building that it just... It's like with the library in Macon Plaza, it's just phenomenal. And so I think the potential for an event center... I mean, I'm on the school board as well, and I'm excited about having business meetings there and Christmas parties. And it's just... And I'm not complaining about the Abbey, because they do a great job, but we just don't have other options. And what a way to bring people downtown and experience art and this beautiful historic building. So I'm getting emotional because I love the place. So that's my push. So thank you for your consideration, and please ask more questions.
No, my question will go back to Tony. When is the process going to start with regards to filling the full-time positions and the two half-time positions if we need to get these things rolling? What's going to be the process to get that going?
Should the council give us the green light tonight immediately? We'll have people technically onboard working for the city by January the first.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Oh, I just... No, you go ahead. I just want to make a comment. For those of us that got to go to Salida, if you recall, they got their big break, as you say, for downtown because of their arts. And I think we have a huge art community that is kind of stifled right now because they're not... They don't have a place to grow and expand. So I just want to make this statement that, you know, other communities have been able to make it with an art culture community, and I really think that we have that background in our community. We just need to be able to let it grow.
Ms. Turner?
Buddy, I know you've only been director for a couple of months, but how long have you been with the Art Center?
I started at the Art Center... Sorry. I started at the Art Center about a year and a half ago as a volunteer. And then last November, I came on as a part-time assistant director.
Okay. And then I wondered, how much of the permanent collection is art that's been made locally by our local residents?
Sixty-seven percent. Locally, regionally, yeah, I would say about sixty-seven percent. There's a very large Cristo collection that is obviously not regional. But yes, and there are some, I mean, very well-known families who have ancestors that are in that collection. The Adamic family, the Penningtons, several. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Cochran?
My question is for Tony. What exactly are you asking us to approve tonight? Is this just a yearly thing, and we review at the end of each year and decide to proceed or not? Or are we doing for two, three years? Are we doing for five years?
Well, technically, to give us the authority to merge the Art Center into the city's structure and budget, and we'll come back in January with a proposed revision to the 2019 budget, because currently, it's not reflected.
Right.
But allow us to move forward, to get the staff, get the marketing, get the IT, get the city attorneys onboard with this transition. There are a lot of steps that need to be taken, but to give us that green light to start that process and hopefully get this up and running as a city department as quickly as possible.
My question is more, though, like, do we have a time limit? Is it until you say it's not working anymore? Is it a review at the end of the year?
It's the council prerogative. We'll certainly provide you with an update on a quarterly and annual basis on how they're performing vis-à-vis these performance criteria. And, you know, you'll certainly want to revisit them, and that's your decision, just like any other operation in the city. You could decide tomorrow that, hey, the museum or the library is costing us too much money. They need to close. Cities have done that. This is no different. It's your prerogative to determine, you know, what you're going to appropriate monies for on an annual basis. And we would hope that, out of fairness, we'd be given a couple of years to demonstrate we can move this in the right direction. And again, the criteria should be those performance measures. Are we hitting those milestones? If we are, we're heading in the right direction.
My follow-up question to that would be, what is our break-even point, given the value of the building and how much we would be putting in on a yearly basis? What are we looking at?
Probably by year three, would probably be the end of year three. The building and the park combined are probably worth in excess of six hundred thousand dollars. So I'd say by year three, you'll have invested that much, and that's probably your point of, yes, we're going forward, or no, this is not headed in the direction we want. We can't afford to do this. Sell the assets, and let's recoup what we've invested. That's probably about year three.
Okay.
Ms. Arques, and then Mr. Arques, and then Ms. Gonzalez.
The only comment I want to make, I think it's a good idea, but I just want the citizens out there that are listening in on TV, and I know there's probably a hundred percent participation out there in the city, but I want them to know that we are doing this for two reasons, okay? One, it's not strictly for the Arts Center in itself. It's for the Arts Center to get bigger and better with all the things that we're talking about adding to it. And the things that we want to add to it is what's going to help make it more successful so that they can continue to do what they're doing. And then we reap and see other events come into that center and take advantage, you know, of the historic buildings that we have. And hopefully, that it also does what we would like it to do, draw more people into our downtown area, because we're doing other things with that wonderful building.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Can we talk about the name?
Sure.
I think it's a little long. Can we just say Canyon City Center for the Arts?
You could. One of the things we think you really need to emphasize, it has an event component. If it's just, for example, if you look at the names of Evergreen's community and Art Center, yeah, it works. Salida, the Steam Plant Event Center. I mean, I would think that was a steam plant with an event center. It's an art center. It's also a performing art center. We want to try to keep it as specific as possible to who's our audience? Our audience are arts patrons and people that would like to lease this space. So we think events should be in its title. Otherwise, people would just think it's an art gallery and not even think twice about, oh, I could rent that for a wedding or a special reception. That's what's going to financially keep this thing afloat, is not the arts, which are important, but financially, it's events, driving events to this space. That's what's going to keep it financially viable.
May I... Maybe, Ms. Gonzalez, what do you think of Canyon City Arts and Event Center? It's a little more concise.
Yeah, I think so.
That might be... All that might be a discussion for later date. Right now, we're trying to talk about...
We have options.
Let's not do that. Anyway, Mr. Meisner, please.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Tony, so you had indicated that we're going to have a revised 2019 budget
Yes.
in January. So you're essentially going to reallocate two hundred and sixty-five thousand within the existing budget that we've approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Okay. So we're giving, at this point, direction to city staff administrator to go forward with the... In consideration of the merger with the city. Does anyone... Is that... How else you want to word it?
This is a sense of counsel issue, is that right?
Do we do a thumbs thing?
Do you want to vote on it?
I mean, I think staff is looking for consensus, so you don't need to take a formal vote, although you can. But it's really a consensus to move forward.
Could we start with Ms. Turner and come this way?
Yeah, and I guess I'd just like to tell everyone that I do sit on the Art Center Board. I've been a member of their board just since September or October, so I've only been to two board meetings so far. But when the board voted last week on whether they wanted to proceed with this agreement, I abstained from that vote, because I didn't want to be seen as voting in both places. So I just wanted to be out in the open about it, anyway. But I am in favor of this plan. I think it'd be great for our city.
Okay. Ms. Meisner?
I'm in, by all means, support this for the community. I just warn council, there's going to be people out there that are going to let us know this is not a good idea.
Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a thumbs up.
Okay, I am as well.
Thumbs up for economic development and support of downtown.
Okay. Ms. Cochran?
I think it's a good idea. I just don't want to see our other services cut to fund it. So as long as we can make it a success, then I'm in favor of it.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I'm a thumbs up.
Ms. Arques? Okay. Is that the consensus you're looking for?
Yes.
Let's move on. Let's take number eighteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
So I just want to say thank you to the art board and also to Lisa and Suzanne from the... Our current libraries, because they are going to be taking on some extra responsibilities and working in tandem together. I think it'll be a great synergy between all of you. And just appreciate each and every one of you for the work that's coming to your tables.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go back and jump to number eighteen, if I can find it. Number eighteen is consideration municipal code update pertaining to deer harvesting ordinance number thirty-six, series 2018, for introduction and first reading by title only entitled in ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, amending title six of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the addition of new chapter 6.11, establishing a deer harvesting program. We'd have to invite the city administrator and a staff member to discuss that.
Yes, council, you clearly recall, you've had several discussions on this, probably starting in February, then April, more recently in October, all with the Division of Wildlife and getting public input. And the issue is to discuss and try to formulate, what's the best method and management on dealing with the excessive deer population within the community? I think that's a fact. To that end, the Division of Wildlife has spoken to us. They basically want a partnership with the city. They would create a new hunting license C, similar to what they've done in Salida, which has proven successful. It would provide, recommend for normal rifle deer license, but because it's illegal to use firearms within the city for that purpose, the only truly legal method, even though it's considered a rifle license, would be to harvest deer through a crossbow, a recurve bow, or compound bow. So through archery methods. The proposed, and we've provided you a copy, boundaries would go beyond the city limits. They would contain portions of Fremont County in our direct sphere, I would say, of influence or urbanization, because deers don't stop within the city limits. They go back and forth. So we think that's appropriate. Of course, the hunting would be restricted to daylight and require hunting proficiency on the part of the Division of Wildlife. There are four elements that we're proposing that by ordinance the city adopt that would complement the Division of Wildlife's requirements. The first is that someone would have to be at the minimum beyond a four-foot stand to shoot from, so arrows are going down, not up, because we are in an urban environment. There'd be written permission or verbal permission required from the landowner for either both the hunt and any harvesting after the kill, that the hunting occur on no less than one acre of property. So you cannot, Jim's example, hunt from his backyard, because he doesn't live on an acre. He can always buy his property ownership around him. And also, to be sensitive, there is a very rare set of albino deer in the city. We want to preserve and protect them. So targeting, wounding, or killing such albino species would be prohibited under this ordinance.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions of council?
I have a question. Where is the Division of Wildlife?
Well, I can answer that. Keep in mind, the harvesting of deer within the city limits is controlled by the Division of Wildlife. We have no control over that whole process. All we can do is put some city ordinance limits in terms of what we've talked about on it. But the whole harvesting process is through the Division of Wildlife. They determine the number of licenses per area, and all we're asking for, or that they're asking for and we're agreeing to, is to increase the number of licenses that would be issued within that boundary. So aside from that, we're talking about a DOW program that has a couple of local limitations.
Ms. Turner?
Do we know what the increased number is for licenses?
No, not yet. The DOW has got a...
I know. I wanted to ask that question, too.
Well, the DOW each year looks at deer populations and then male and female populations, and then they then project what the harvest rates need to be in order to maintain a healthy herd. And that's throughout the whole state. And then within the whole state, there's each of these little segmented areas. One area may be very high in population, so that harvest rate for that area would maybe be a little higher. The problem we have is the area that encompasses Canyon City really is not out of control. So when the DOW looks at our areas, they look at that area and say, the population really isn't that bad. It's when you condense it down to the city limits is where we're talking about having a problem. But in answer to your question, I think those harvest results are announced somewhere in January, February, in terms of what those numbers will be.
So the current numbers, though, encompass an area much larger than the city. So are you saying that in January, they are going to have numbers specific to this map they've given us?
That's my understanding, that I could buy a license that would encompass 581, which is a large area.
Right.
But I could... John could go out and buy a specific license for the city.
Under this plan?
That would be part of that expanded number of licenses. And what we're talking... I think some people look at the process and think that we're talking about harvesting one hundred and fifty, two hundred deer each year. That's not going to happen. We may get an additional ten licenses if we're lucky. That's not a whole lot.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, is what is that number? I just don't know how we know.
DOW has not given it to us, and they can't yet because they haven't...
Yeah. I thought when they did the Salida program, which they deemed to be successful, I thought it was in the twenty to thirty range, but I'll double-check with them. It's not a significant number.
But their parameters were different than ours, because theirs were outside the city limits.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez?
We had talked about doing some additional training and informational meetings. Is that what number one is? Creating a new antlers hunt list C?
Well, that and also number five, that it requires hunting proficiency and minimum age requirements. They'll promote that and... They'll promote that, and there'll be a program that people will have to abide by to obtain those licenses.
Okay.
Well, in specific answer to your question, we did have some discussion about... Some other communities have had archery qualifications. Keep in mind that those are not DOW requirements. So, that if we were to require a specific archery training session, that would be a community Canyon City expense and a program that we would have to put on. So, any of that additional, any of those things above and beyond the standard DOW requirements are things that we would have to...
It would become our responsibility. Okay.
Develop a program, get instructors, get certification.
I guess my only concern is humans getting hurt.
Pardon?
Humans getting hurt.
Well, that's one of the reasons we have the elevated standing requirement. That is unique. And, you know, that's why we would have it in an ordinance that the city could enforce it. You have to be shooting from a minimum four-foot elevated stand, so hopefully the arrows are going down and not up.
Sure.
Because we are in an urbanized environment.
I think we have to remember, too, that this is already legal, and it's already happening in our city limits, and there haven't been any incidents.
Okay. Ms. Hammack?
I have a question. So, for our attorney, what's the penalty for violation of the ordinance?
It would be the city's general penalty.
That's 250 a day or something like that, is that right?
Well, each offense is a separate violation. I don't remember the precise fine, but yeah.
Something like that. Okay, thank you.
Was that a question, Mr. Hammack, or?
No, I'm just suggesting it be a pinky.
Okay.
You're not gonna get a second on that.
Wait, wait a minute. I'm losing control here. Quiet. Mr. Hammack, go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, I...
Well, we have some people who wanna speak.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Don't... You're not endearing yourself to them.
I understand.
Okay. Could I have Paula Shagley step forward to the podium, and she would like to talk about deer... I thought it said romance, but it says ordinance.
It might have some romance involved.
Easy, Ms. Smith. Okay.
Good evening, council. Thank you for this opportunity.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Yes, I will. I'm Paula Shagley. We live at 696 North Reynolds, corner of Reynolds and Pear. The abbey backs up to our property, and we've got several other lots around us that grow hay. So, the deer have decided that they really like taking up residence at our place for some reason. We bought our property about eighteen years ago, and at that time, we got really excited if there was one or two deer there. You know, it's really a novelty. It was pretty cool. I don't like Bambi very well anymore, because they do a lot of damage. Take that times sixteen, times nineteen. It is not unusual to have that many deer in our property, in the front, in the back. They do do a lot of damage. If you go by, it looks like a fortress around all of our trees and everything, and anything that's not covered well, then we know we will lose all of our efforts of whatever we have planted. But the deer have just, they are having triplets, twins and triplets now. We have seen so many more male deer in the herds, and we just know that a nineteen... Amount of nineteen is gonna probably be twenty-five or more, at least within number of female that are there right now. So, we're feeling kinda helpless in what we can do. I will just say that this is their season of... Do they call it breeding season? I don't know what they call it. The male are very dangerous. They are populating around our house, front and back, and my husband, in walking the dog, has already encountered one about to charge after him. And the same thing happened to me last week, as I took our dog out and unexpectedly came upon it. And boy, are they protective of their herds. Their mommies are with them. I think, so what I am saying is, I'm very open to having this harvesting done on our property. I would give full permission for that. In fact, can I have all ten of those new on my property? Just come on over. But I would wish that the population that says, you know, how can you say that? How can you be against these darling deer? They were here first. They were darling when there was two or three that would casually come over and leave, but now they literally live at our place, and it's really concerning. So, I don't know what else to do, and no, I don't feed them. So, do you have any questions for me?
Questions, Ms. Shagley? Ms. Turner?
Have you attempted to draw a tag to harvest a deer already on your property?
I would no way do that or eat it. Uh-uh. That's not my thing. I just would be gone while somebody comes and does that. And yes, we do have the four-foot, at least high, you know, area to go to shoot the deer from. And there would be nobody around. I mean, it's not populated but us right there, so...
Have you considered inviting a hunter in the past? I mean, because it is legal to harvest already in city limits?
I have. Thank you for asking that, yes. I have mentioned it to several people, as they say they're going to go hunting and so on. And there is several right now that have told me they would like to go and get a, pull a tag or whatever you do. And I would definitely give them permission. But I am so for this, because seriously, come watch. I think there's gonna be a gigantic herd next spring. The babies are cute, but they grow too and have babies.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick comment. I live in the same neighborhood as you.
Yes.
And I've also walked my dog and had, not a buck, but a doe with babies come at us while we were walking. It's scary.
It is. I forgot to mention that, yes, they are...
We've hid behind trees and like...
They literally just come right, I mean, to our patio area, too. They're just everywhere.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Is Melvin Stolfoos here? Would you like to come and talk to us, or?
Well, he approaches.
Yes.
Just keep in mind, it's my understanding that the increased number of licenses would only be for does. It would not be for bucks. Tony, is that your recollection?
Yes.
So, you're gonna hear the thing about trophy hunters and what have you, but as I'm understanding, that the additional license would only be for does and would not include bucks.
Would you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, it is Mervyn Stolfoos. I'm sorry if that was misspelled. Address is 2741 Pear Street. I live land joining to the Shagleys. So, I would definitely echo what she has said. She put it very well. We have little over nine acres, and the population of deer is just overwhelming. Front and backyards, granite, yes, we do have, we have acreage for haymaking, and that brings them there. But our place is also full of apple trees, and that is just a deer heaven. So, it's just really hard to control. Recently, we had our dog tethered, which we keep her penned up all the time, but she was attacked by a deer, and she's not a big dog, but she was attacked. So, now we keep her in a chain link pen, because it's not safe to have her out. So, that is a big concern of ours as residents there. Just a very overpopulation of deer and what to do about it.
Any comments of Mr. Stolfoos? Thank you. Go ahead.
I think maybe the same comment. Have you ever tried to pull a deer tag in city?
I have not, since we lived in Colorado for almost four years now. So, my knowledge of pulling license and where to use them, especially in city limits, is very minimal. So, I would be very open to knowing the regulations for city limits and what it takes.
So, I think one of the points that I do wanna make, though, is that we have from previous conversations, have had hunters come up and say that they have tried year after year after year to pull a license, a tag, to address deer harvesting on their property and have not been able to get a tag, because they're so rare and hard to find, hard to get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Well, I was just gonna respond to Mayor Pro Tem Smith. I think DOW told us it would take like four or five years to accumulate enough points to get the tag in this area.
To be able to get it?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions of council and discussion? Ms. Haquez?
I'm gonna make a comment now. I was, I didn't like the original deal when we started with this deer business and everything. I thought it would create more problems than it would do good. I'm still against it with one exception. I'm gonna vote for it, and the only reason I'm voting for it is because of the albino deer. Otherwise, if it wasn't for the albino deer, I'd vote against it again. But those guys, they're gonna get my vote to pass this one.
Thank you. And there's a lot of humor there. I'm not going there at all. Ms. Hammack?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
That we approve ordinance number thirty-six, series of 2018, amending Title VI of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the addition of new chapter 6.11, establishing a deer harvesting program with the following modification, that under C4, it reads, "In addition, each hunter participating in the program is prohibited from targeting, wounding, or killing." And here's my suggestion to change, any albino deer, period. We do not define species anywhere. We talk about deer, and so I think it's appropriate to say deer, and say any albino deer. That's my motion.
So, you're striking...
Okay.
So, I'm striking the rare in species and inserting any.
Mr. Meisner?
Second.
Mr. Meisner has seconded. That is... Any discussion on that motion? He's been seconded with the amendments, as Mr. Hammack has made. Any discussion on that motion?
There's two comments I'd like to make in response to comments that have been made in the public. And when was that the idea that all of a sudden, there's gonna be hunters running all over town and through people's yards? And that is not gonna happen. That is not legal. That is not okay. This is about accumulating enough points and experience to get the tag in the first place, and then acquiring permission on certain, you know, properties that meet the requirements to be able to harvest these deer. Another one was that, when we talked to DOW this last time, that there are some deer that come through town and they leave. They migrate. And that they're targeting that season in town to occur after that migration has happened. So, those deer who like to migrate are gone and out of town, and we're only targeting those deer who've decided to make permanent residence in Canyon City and never leave town. And so, that's important, that we're addressing those permanent residents.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
I've also gotten suggestions from various citizens about alternative methods to hunters and harvesting. Keep in mind that wildlife is managed by the Division of Wildlife by constitutional guidelines within the state of Colorado. And you don't have the option of killing deer and giving it to veterans, or killing deer and giving it to homeless people, or bringing in contract hunters. Those options are not options that are available in the state of Colorado. The only option we have in the state of Colorado is to get a valid license and then harvest that animal and then consume that animal. You cannot harvest an animal in the state of Colorado and just give that meat away. It has to be harvested, it has to be consumed, for the most part, by the individual that harvested the animal.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded, and discussed. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Let's call in number 10, the 2018 Administrative Services Agreement. Meritain Health Incorporated and the City of Canyon City. Can the administrator comment on that, please?
Yeah, Mayor Council, this would normally be a consent item, but the exception this year is this has been a service being provided by Meritain through a Etna network to be our third-party administrator on our medical plan, which exceeds over $2 million annually. They've done a good job, but we've been under contract with them for 25 years. The city attorney has brought up a valid point. Their contract does specify that the venue of governing law is the state of New York and not Colorado. It's because this is Etna. They have contracts, hundreds of contracts across the country. So, you can imagine what that represents to them if they had to be in every state in the country as far as these deals. We've never had a dispute in 25 years, but we just wanna raise the issue that we're proposing that we maintain the current venue of New York City. Otherwise, they will not contract with us. And they've been a good provider.
Any questions? Mr. Meisner?
So, my logical question is, is there a company in Colorado that could provide the same service?
Well, it's more than just doing the third party. There is a network, again, through Etna, which is a national network that we're part of. That would be almost impossible to replicate. We've done extremely well with our health plan, largely because of the cost controls that Etna provides us and the discounting that they provide us. And I would hate to say, let's walk away from this relationship and try to establish a new one with... Because Colorado, right now, is one of the more difficult states when it comes to healthcare costs, and we're the exception to the rule. We've done a really good job the last couple of years.
Ms. Turner?
I just have a question about the date on this. It looks like last year's contract expired at the beginning of October, and I see they didn't sign until the end of October, and here we are considering it in December.
Yeah, they got it to us late, and that's why this is coming to you late. They got it to us late.
Okay.
We apologize for that. But we don't dismiss the concerns. The city attorney's concerns are valid. We just think we have to weigh and balance the pros and cons, and we think the relationship is more important than the venue of the suit, especially since we've had a spotless record with them for 25 years.
Any other questions? Administrator? I would then seek a motion in a second. Ms. Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve the 2018 Administrative Services Agreement between Meritaim Health and the City of Canyon City.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion on that motion? During the seat, no. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Number 11, consideration of an adoption by title only of Resolution number 14, series number 2018, levying general property taxes for the year 2018 to help defray the cost of government for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2019 budget year. Could we have a discussion from the administrator?
I'd like to punt this to Harry, given that he's been here for three hours. He deserves a little face time.
Well, Resolution number 14, series of 2018, is setting up the middle levy for 2019 budget. We have, we are not changing the middle levy. Middle levy is going to be same what we have currently. That'll be 2.887. We received the final information from the county assessor's office today, and you have the corrected resolution in front of you. The assessor's assessment in total is 139,8438. And if you calculate that on the middle levy for 2.887, we will receive about $403,615 as a property tax revenue. We are also collecting 0.022 mill levy for refund and abatement. That is very minimum. It's only $248 with general, and the total of that both is $403,895. So, with that, my recommendation is for the approval of the middle levy, so we can set up the middle levy with the county.
Any questions? Mr. Patel? Mr. Meisner?
Harry, is it, are we talking about .002 or .0022?
No, .002.
Any questions to Mr. Patel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion that we...
I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number fourteen, series of two thousand eighteen.
Second. Ms. Cochran, thank you. Any discussion on that motion and second? During the seat, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Number twelve, consideration adoption by title only, resolution number fifteen, series two thousand eighteen, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Public Highway Ad Grade Crossing Improvement Agreement between the city of Canyon City and the Rock and Rail LLC Railroad. Would you comment, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, Mayor. In two thousand sixteen, the city entered into an agreement with Royal Court Railroad for three railroad crossings on Eleventh Street. They sense and have relocated to another facility. Mark Merdara is now willing to purchase their former property and operate it as Rock and Railroad. So, we want to enter into another, a new agreement, but they just need one crossing versus the three previously. So, that's in essence. Do you have other further questions? We have Adam here.
Would you like to comment? Any questions of Adam, or...
Well, I just have a few things to point out.
Yes, go ahead.
One, the agreement that went out in the original packet was not signed, and was also not the revised agreement, so I hope you have the signed revised one. Okay. And then, on the resolution, the fourth whereas, we need to strike that because it has absolutely nothing to do with this agreement. That just is something that got left over in that resolution in there, so...
Any... Ms. Smith?
I have a question. On the fourth whereas, it talks about the capital contributions via referendum number two A to be collected. Can you...
Yeah, that's the one I just mentioned. We need your strike.
That's the one that's getting...
Yeah, it has nothing to do with this. It's a leftover language that got left in there.
Okay, 'cause I'm not seeing the new one in my pile of stuff, but...
So, I would just ask, when you vote on the resolution, that you strike the fourth whereas?
Since they're moving location, are there other old railroad crossings they aren't using anymore that will need to be abandoned, or...
No. We will be abandoning one, though, with this agreement.
And will they be taking care of that at some point, at least?
Yes. That'll be their responsibility.
Is it one or two?
One.
One crossing.
Ms. Turner?
Has the revised agreement been reviewed by the city attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of either the city administrator or Adam? If none, entertain a motion. In a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number fifteen, series two thousand eighteen, authorizing you to sign the agreement.
You get to do something with the striking of the fourth whereas?
Well, yeah, it's not in our updated...
Correct ordinance.
Yeah, I got the ordinance, the corrected one. And I will sign the corrected one. I get to do something.
I'd second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? None, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you. Number thirteen is a second reading, an adoption by title only, ordinance number thirty-one, series two thousand eighteen, entitled an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, authorizing the conveyance of certain city property. Would you enlighten us again, Mr. Administrator?
So, the unusual situation, Warren Hart and Ms. Wagner purchased thirty-four Tanner Parkway, and unknowingly were encroaching on city property, which was an outfall lot, largely a storm drainage facility, and they desired to own, in fact, there since they have some improvements in it. So, to that end, they have paid for all the costs associated with this, both the surveying and the actual acquisition of this property. So, this would be the conclusion of what could have been a bad dream if they tried to sell this property in the future.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez?
Wasn't this brought to us late summer?
Yeah, they had to do survey work, and this was brought back to the council last meeting, so this is the second reading.
Oh, I wasn't here.
Yeah, there was survey work that was done in the interim.
I just wondered why it took so long. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Administrator? Ms. Meisner? Mr. Meisner? Ms. Hammack?
The... I think this brings up something. It's an issue, I think, that the council needs to direct staff and our attorneys on. The issue is that, as it stands now, the council has given direction to city staff in pretty clear terms about exactions, okay? And are disfavoring, you know, not being in favor of exactions. One of the issues that we have in approving various issues that's not directly related to this parcel is that the issue of rights of way or easements for stormwater drainage. And I think that we need to direct staff and our attorneys to work together, to come back to us with language that where exactions are imposed on property splits as soon as in the process as we can to establish the appropriate rights of ways and easements for stormwater drainage purposes. The reason we need this is because we're dealing with a problem now that has been years in the making, and right now, we don't have a mechanism to address that. And so, it's my suggestion that using this as kind of a vehicle to have this discussion at this time, to approve the administrator, working with staff and attorneys, to come back to us with some language for exactions for stormwater rights of ways and easements.
So, in essence, you would like us to come back with an ordinance that would preserve natural drainage areas so that we're not put in a position years later. Dawson Ranch is a classic illustration. We're having to undergo expensive infrastructure for stormwater, whether it's piping or culverts because it wasn't... You know, we didn't preserve the natural drainage flows of these properties. Is that the essence of what you asked for?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to correct. I'd like to... Maybe that's a general government discussion after we see what they're gonna come up with, but tonight, we're talking about number... I even lost what's number we're at.
Thirteen. Thirty-one.
Thirteen. Great.
Oh, ordinance number thirty-one.
Ordinance...
It says here. We're so focused.
I'm so focused. I don't wanna make light of this. So, but we're looking for... This is the second reading on this. We had it... We have had a... We're ready to go for any more discussion. Let's call the roll.
I'm ready to make a motion that we adopt...
Didn't we make the motion? We didn't make the motion?
Nope.
Please make the motion, Ms. Smith.
Ordinance number thirty-one, series of two thousand eighteen, upon second reading.
Ms. Cochran, thank you. Get me out of this. Any questions? Would you... None? Great. Call a roll.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, let's go into fourteen. The second reading, an adoption by title only of ordinance number thirty-two, series two thousand eighteen, entitled an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, vacating certain public rights of way within the city of Canyon City, Colorado. Could we have our administrator discuss that?
Well, again, this is a housecleaning activity, and we can have Adam speak more to it if you wish, but this is requesting by Mr. Tezak, a vacation of unused right-of-way that's adjacent to and surrounding his property. It's kind of a housekeeping task.
Yeah, this is the second reading we covered last time.
Adam certainly is here to provide you any more detailed information should you need.
Any questions? Ms. Turner? Go ahead.
I just wanted to make one comment. Gentlemen, I hope you don't mind, but based on our conversation that I had with them in the audience before coming up, I had expressed concern if there was any problems as they move forward, to please let us know, and they had mentioned that the dealings of city staff has been very positive, and they've been very business-friendly. So, I just wanted to put that out there and say thank you, Adam, for that.
Yes, gentlemen, I should have caught this sooner. We could have gotten out of here sooner. Could have put you before the deer thing, but anyway.
You enjoyed every minute of it.
Yeah, right. Okay. Then, a motion? Ms. Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number thirty-two of two thousand eighteen on second reading.
Second.
Ms. Turner, thank you. Any discussion on that? During the seat, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
And Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you. Number fifteen, this is, again, a second reading. It's adoption by title only of ordinance number thirty-three, series two thousand eighteen, entitled an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, authorizing the conveyance of certain city property within the First Street subdivision exemption. Mr. Administrator?
Similar to our last two items, this is a major cleanup of a kind of unintended mess, but this would convey the city's interest in these lots, one through four, within the First Street subdivision. This has been a wicked web we have woven, and this would untangle it and allow this property to be free and clear. Again, if you have any more specific questions, Adam is dutifully in the back to run up and answer the questions.
Any questions? If none, I would entertain a motion. In a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance thirty-three of two thousand eighteen in the second reading.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? During the seat, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. Number sixteen. This is, again, another second reading. It's adoption by title only of ordinance number thirty-four, series two thousand eighteen, for introduction in first reading by title only. This is second reading by title only. An ordinance appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies in the amount and for the purpose as set forth below for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, for the two thousand nineteen budget year. Would you care to comment, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, since our budget reviews, this is allowing us to carry forward some major investments that we won't accomplish this year, the two largest being property acquisition. I won't indicate the property for obvious reasons, but that's eight hundred thousand dollars. And then, of course, the long-awaited wayfinding monument signs and kiosks. We have not been able to accomplish that this fiscal year, so that's three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Those are the two biggest items, a couple of smaller ones, but this allows us to carry out these projects next year with this revised budget.
Any questions, Administrator? Ms. Meisner, are you...
About the signs.
The clock's ticking.
It always is. This... These monies are monies that are being carried forward?
Yes.
And what's that total?
One point two one nine nine. It's almost one point three million dollars. I think I just identified about almost one point two of that, which is those two.
That total transfers out, one point... Or one two nine nine four?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but...
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's a general clump of money? And it's not specifically allocated to any particular fund in the two thousand nineteen carryforward?
No, that's for... That's for cost allocation between the water fund and stormwater fund to the general fund.
Within that... Within those funds, are any of those monies specifically carried forward? I thought we had a conversation last week, last meeting, about some carryforward?
We...
Yeah, the items I just identified, for example, we'll be carrying forward eight hundred thousand in future property acquisitions to two thousand nineteen. We have a property in mind, and then, of course, we would like to see the completion of the monument wayfinding program, and that's three hundred and eighty-four thousand. That should definitely happen.
Did not Ms. Smith request a carryforward on that ditch crossing fund?
Why, yes, I did.
Is that denied?
No. Well, we have a... We budgeted a hundred thousand dollars this year for that. If you want to increase that, we can increase that. I think we explained, that's kind of a plug number every year to see whether we have a need. For example, we didn't spend any money this year, so it's kind of money waiting in case there's a need. It doesn't relate directly to stormwater, ditch crossings, but if you want to increase that amount to its historical level, we can do that.
Well, call me crazy, but I thought that in past conversations we've had about particular ditch crossings, that we would take... That we would combine money from past, you know, two thousand, like, say, eighteen and nineteen that could have been put together to actually accomplish a ditch crossing. But what happens is, every year, a ditch crossing never gets done, and I know the ditch company would like to see some ditch crossings get done.
We normally don't carry forward unless it is requested in the following year budget and you appropriate. I think Adam mentioned that he need only hundred thousand dollars for ditch crossing for next year, and that's what we would...
But we can increase it. It's your priority.
You can increase by supplemental budget appropriation.
Adam, what ditch crossing are you gonna do for a hundred thousand dollars?
I'm lost for words as to how we create a budget of X amount of dollars for no projects.
So, I can explain what happened this year on the hydraulic ditch budget. We set it aside because we thought something was gonna... A partnership was gonna happen with the ditch company in the county, and it didn't. That all fell flat on its face, so that's why this year's money hasn't been spent. Also, what typically happens with hydraulic ditch money, if you look at past budgets, is a hundred thousand dollars typically is not enough money to build one crossing. What happens, though, is, I mean, their water is still on today, so we can't start a project until very late in the year, and typically, then it goes, you know, till April, March it goes, you know, till April, March or April, before the project's completed. So in the years past, we'll spend $100,000 in one year, $100,000 next year on the same project over two calendar years.
Takes two phases.
So, I mean, that's, that's a possibility, too, this, this next year. I mean, if we budget $100,000 and you want to do, and that's a priority to you to do a crossing, we would probably start it late 2019 and then budget for the balance of it in 2020. But that's why this year's money didn't get spent, is we specifically set it aside. Instead of building a crossing, we thought we were going to do a joint project, and it didn't happen. And that was the project on Dozier Avenue.
Well, even before Dozier, though, I know the ditch company wants to see some ditch crossings get.
I can't speak for them. The ditch crossings really are not their issue. The ditch crossings belong to us. They're our responsibility and liability. They're, they're bigger concern than stormwater that I know of.
But don't the, don't the ditch crossings intersect with their, with our city water?
So ditch crossing that we're talking about, it's essentially the bridge, the culvert that our roads cross over the ditch in.
Oh, so it doesn't, okay.
Yeah, we just haven't done one. It just seems like it would be prudent to actually, that's one of those basic maintenance that we need to actually accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to add $100,000 at the wish of the council.
I mean, there's a, there's a number. If you go back and look at our 2A priority list, there are some of those future years that, that have ditch crossings under those roadways. So if there is some reconstruction of 2A streets that need ditch money, then certainly that would move those priorities to the top of the list.
Yes, sir.
So the, I did listen to the, although I was not present, I did listen to the tape of, of the last meeting. And, and what I, what I took away from that is that, is it was my feeling that, that council, just like if we don't spend money to acquire property, that we hold that over for next year, that it was the, the request and the desire of council to do the same with, with this ditch crossing money, is, is what, as I understand it. And I think that's the request, that if we budget $100,000 to deal with ditch crossings, which is related in some form or fashion to stormwater, that if it's not spent, that the money accumulates, just like that we're.
Holding money over for.
And you can, but then if you talk accumulation, it goes in, but then it comes right back out because you designated 200,000, because you've got 100,000 coming in into it. But you have to designate. You can't, you have to understand, you're getting this big ball here. We, that's what we're doing now. We're specifically designating that. If you want more, 100,000 this year, designate it. You understand that. It's.
So appropriate, actually, appropriate.
Appropriate.
Right, so what happened this year is in, in the proposed budget, we ended up with the same number that we had this year. If you guys, as Tony said, if you guys want it to be more, Harry, you'll have to make $100,000 adjustments over.
And if we didn't do that, that 100,000 would just go back into, like, go back into the general fund, the piggy bank, whatever. We are saying, no, no, we want that out. If you want 200, then we'll have to go back and he'll do this magic and it'll come out with 100,000. Well, that's how that works.
But the, but the, the, I think the point is, Mr. Mayor, is that, is that, as I understand it, we've got money that we didn't spend for property acquisition.
Right.
We're allocating that money via this ordinance.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Right? And so the, I think that what council is requesting is that we allocate the 100,000 that we didn't spend last year, combine it with our current 100,000.
Okay. Well, you're, then you're just talking about allocating $200,000?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Since you already approved last time a resolution and first reading on, on ordinance, I would suggest you continue to approve this. And then if you want to spend more money on 100,000 more, we will bring the supplemental appropriation ordinance next year, and you can always spend more than what you want to do. So by holding this, you know, ordinance will not make sense. I think my request would be if you request, you know, Adam to spend 200,000, we will bring the supplemental appropriation for your approval.
Yes. So what Harry's saying is after the first of the year, we're on our new budget. We bring it up and we allocate another $100,000. So then we have 100 already in by tonight's resume, second reading, and then we do a supplemental, just like my company or anything else, supplemental in that budget year and pull that out somehow.
Yeah.
That's up to my partner to figure out.
Because we got to bring you back a supplemental for the Arts Center anyway. In January, so.
It's not, that's how the budget goes. You're squinting. I'm sorry.
You're not the only individual that's ever created a budget.
No, I know. I'm just saying.
Based on Harry's recommendation, I make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 34, Series of 218, on second reading. Then next go around, if you guys want to add a bunch of money to everything else, go ahead.
I'd second that motion.
In a second. Any discussion on that? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Any comments from the city Administrator?
On that matter?
On, no, no.
On the next matter, 17?
17? We're done.
I thought, I thought Christmas had come early.
Okay, number 17. This is the second reading, an adoption by title only of ordinance Number 35, Series 2018, entitled an ordinance appropriating additional sums of money to defray expenses in excess of amounts budgeted for the City of Canyon City, Colorado for the 2018, for the 2000, is that 18 or 19 budget year?
This is for 18.
For 18 budget year.
This is a good example that we are re-appropriating some of the money we already spent, which was not included in the 18 budget.
No, it's not.
So that's what example.
This is money you already spent.
We already spent.
Right. We're talking about appropriating.
This is the one you requested us to spend, and then we are coming with the.
Really, a year-end reconciliation. For example, you take the operating fund, there was X as expenditures of 170,000 on both of these issues. One was $30,000 police grant, which you approved and accepted. So we got to reflect that. Those are expenses. The other was $140,000 for the four-mile water agreement. Again, the council had approved that, so now we come back year-end and reconcile those numbers. So that's effectively what this is.
That's two.
Yeah. You want me to go through all of them?
No, that's my point. It's, it's two out of this total amount that we're talking about.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Smith?
I'd like to move that we approve ordinance 35, Series of 2018, upon the second reading. Second?
Second, Ms. Cochran, thank you. Any discussion on that? Mr. Meisner?
Just for future years, I would, I would ask that council look at this whole process and, and come up with some revision to ordinance that allows the movement of certain amounts of funds between those accounts. The threshold of 5,000 is suggested. I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, but we need to look at something in the future that simplifies that, puts a little bit of responsibility on those directors to manage their particular budgets and gives them the flexibility to move that money from one line item to the other. But we need to probably establish a threshold and minimize our effort also.
That could be a general government.
We, you know, we'll bring you something. We have something already drafted that we can share with the council for your discussion in the first meeting in January. But we concur.
Okay. Good discussion. Where are we at? We had a discussion. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Council, our Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. We're down to, does the Administrator have any more comments, or are you commenting out?
Commenting it out.
You're commenting it out. Therefore, we are.
Mr. Mayor, if you're adjourned.
Mr. Hammerick, boy, you're close.
Thank you. So we do have a sense of council that we're asking staff to bring us back some information in a general government meeting on stormwater and exactions to maintain natural drainages as they exist.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. We're adjourned.